Well, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the December regular meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District's Board of Education. The mission statement for the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Here we have a verification of the meeting notice, please.
Yes, it was posted on the LMASDA website and at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
Okay, thank you. And I will call the meeting to order. I would ask if you would stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call of the members?
Brianna Bestlich, here.
John Delaney, here.
Ken Imers, here.
Amy Litcher, here.
Robert DiNperio, here.
All members are present. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to do so, and if there's any items on the consent agenda that a member would wish to consider separately, this would be the time to do that.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none on a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll move into administrative reports. Ms. Naylor has a guest this evening.
Yes, so I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Anderson of Whipfley Audit Firm. He's here to present the audit report for the 2020-2021 school year.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. Once again, Brian Anderson from Whipfley. It's our second year doing the audit. Last year, we got to do it virtually, and this year, at least, we get to see eyes, and maybe next year, hopefully, we can do faces and see everybody here. So just want to briefly go over the audit, kind of hit some highlights, and then just be available. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them. So I know you're all handed the audit report tonight, but just start there on page one. The opinion of the financial statements is what we always like to start with. It describes the financial statements, what's in there. It indicates that management's responsible for everything, even though we do help kind of put it together. Ultimately, it's management's information that we use to put the amounts together, and then our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements. So with that, we design our tests, obtain audit evidence based on risk assessments, and we evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies. So with that, we got everything we needed to express an opinion, and on the top of page two there is the opinion that everything is fairly presented in all material respects. So it's a clean, unmodified opinion, which is what you're hoping to get. There's a couple other paragraphs here related to required supplementary information related to pension and OPEB. Information there kind of just says that we don't specifically audit it, but we do some limited procedures on those statements. And then it also mentions you don't present a management discussion and analysis, which typical for small districts like this, it's not really much added value, so we often see that a lot, just to kind of condense the financial statements a little bit and not present that information. So and then there is some other information in the back that we don't audit specifically to that level, but we do give an in relation to opinion, basically saying it's fairly presented in relation to what we did audit. So when you look into the financial statements, there's two sets of financial statements. So the first set starts on page four, and this includes capital assets, long-term debt, pension, other post-employment benefit plans. So it's probably not as useful to your day-to-day decision-making, which is mostly the funding you have available currently, but it is valuable to kind of to see what the long-term amounts are out there. In the bottom, the net position is usually what we point to with this, meaning there's three different categories, one being your net investment in capital assets, which is a positive $11 million. You're restricted, which is mainly your net pension asset, the Wisconsin retirement system has a positive balance, so those amounts are restricted. And then some other amounts that you've levied for restricted amounts, meaning like debt service, capital projects, so on and so forth. So that you have a $5 million balance, and then the unrestricted, which is basically the leftover, is $1.5 million deficit, but like you said, it's more of a long-term financial position, so nothing to be too concerned about there. Page five, it shows you did have a $3 million increase in that net position over the year over year, so obviously, that's a positive trend. So with that, and page six shows more of the current financial resources, which is what you kind of use for your day-to-day decision-making. We have your general fund, your debt service, and then all the other funds are considered smaller, as non-major. And the fund balance of those, it is all a positive balance in every single fund there, so that's a good thing. Usually, the thing that we always point out is that unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 5.4 million, and we usually do a comparison of that in relation to the expenditures for the year. Minimally, we try to have at least two months of reserves on hand, but you can have up to three, five, six, seven months if you think that it's needed for future obligations. So I did do an analysis there, and you're a little over three months of net position based on your expenditures, and last year, you were right at three months, so you were able to increase that a little bit, which is obviously a good thing. It'll allow you some flexibility in the future as you have that money available there. So page eight there shows the change in fund balance. Obviously, the general fund did increase a lot, and I think there's a budget actual schedule on the back that I'll go over as well, but I think a lot of it was just you went, stayed, able to stay under budget with your expenditures, and maybe some expenses didn't have to incur because of maybe some virtual options that you didn't have to have in-person expenditures. And then the other funds there on page eight did have a slight decrease over the year, but nothing to be concerned about there. There is some other funds here on pages 10 and 11 related to your scholarship funds, the Employee Benefit Trust, which is the amount that you're holding for future other post-employment benefit plans, and then a small custodial fund there. So there is notes to the financial statements in there. There's a lot of reading in case you are curious about the numbers. I won't point out that anything's too particular, other than maybe page six, long-term debt obligations is always something you need to keep an eye on, making sure that you're keeping under your legal debt obligation and kind of just managing your long-term debt. And obviously, you're ending the year at a little over $31 million of debt, which is a reduction from the prior year, so you're paying everything down as required. And then on page 22, you are allowed to borrow up to 10% of your valuation, and you're well under that, and you do have $92 million available to borrow in the future if you obviously go out for a referendum and pass and you need that money. So is there available? So there's a lot of other footnotes in there related to pension, capital assets, other post-employment benefits. I guess we did have a, on page 36, we did have a restatement of the prior period, and this is related to that first set of financial statements. We kind of went through the capital assets depreciation schedule, and when you use Excel, there's a lot of complicated formulas throughout, and I think last year, we just missed that a formula wasn't quite done correctly. So I think the client did figure that out, and we got it fixed. So we did remove $2.4 million of capital asset value from the prior year that was there, but as I tell most districts, that capital asset number, it's somewhat helpful, but not as helpful to most people as it probably could be. So no reason to be too concerned about that, but we do have it correct, hopefully, going forward. Page 37 shows the budget taxual amounts, like I mentioned before. Revenues are slightly over budget, and then expenditures were under budget by $616,000, so that was the reason why the fund balance was able to increase over year over year. So there's a lot more information, lots of schedules there for you to review and understand. Like I said, page 47 starts the next set of the financial statements in relation to, because you do get a good amount of federal and state awards, we're required to audit your internal control over financial reporting and any compliance. So as far as your internal control over financial reporting, we do have two significant deficiencies, which we've had in the past, and nothing to be concerned of, and they're related to the segregation of duties. Since you are a small district, there's just no really way you can split up everything as Westy can to segregate the initiation, the recording, and the reconciliation of transactions. So I think you do a good job of splitting up the things as much as you can, and we just always say have compensated controls with superintendent overview, the board overviews everything, just make sure that everything is the way you think it should be. So that's really a way to compensate for that. And then financial accounting and reporting, it's just another thing, there's, obviously, there's a lot of complicated schedules in the year here, and because we're asked to prepare the financial statements, that that is considered a significant deficiency if we don't think that somebody here on staff could prepare this on their own. Maybe if Tasha does a lot better in the future and maybe wants to go through a lot of training, which I wouldn't recommend going through training on this, but if she wants to or really wants to understand it more, we can get rid of this in the future if you want, but like I said, with all the districts of your size, it's pretty common finding. So nothing to get, nothing to get concerned about there. As far as compliance goes, there was no issues that we found there. And then on page 49, we're specifically required to audit certain programs, certain federal and state programs every year, once again, with compliance and internal control over compliance, and we're happy to report there was no issues with the reporting with federal and state programs that we audited. So page 51, 51 through 53 do list those federal awards and state awards that you do have during the year. Page 55 mentions the summary of scheduled findings and question costs, which I previously went over. Child nutrition cluster was the federal program we audited, and then the state programs were the special education, and then the general equisation aids. And then we did audit the Medicaid program cluster to satisfy some state DHS requirements. So I guess page 57 does list out those findings that I mentioned before. I think that's it with the financial statements, and then there's a separate communication letter that you received as well, just kind of a summary of how things went. Once again, I probably went over everything that's already included in here. Yeah, there was no change in accounting practices during the year. The one that has been effective related to fiduciary funds, you did early implement last year, so we got that all done and out of the way. But no difficulties in dealing with management. Yeah, Wendy, on her way out, was very cooperative. Tasha, in the transition, was very good at getting everything we needed. No audit adjustments, other than that prior period adjustment, which management did catch. So no disagreements with management, and yeah, just internal control matters I've already mentioned. Excuse me. And then bank collateralization, I think we mentioned this last year, in that if you do have balances over FDIC and the state depository guarantee fund, we do recommend you kind of contact your bank and either get collateral to cover those amounts or a line of credit to cover those amounts. And I think, Tasha, have you worked with that to get that under control this year? So it just kind of protects in case something happened to the bank, that you would get your money. And then the last thing with cybersecurity assessment, it's just something we're probably going to mention every year, just as an opportunity to make sure you got everything under control with cybersecurity, and if there's any, we don't have any specific concerns, but obviously, we're not the expert in that, but if you do want to talk to some expert like that, we do have experts in the firm that do handle that, and we're happy to do a quick assessment of that if you'd like and talk if there's anything further that you should be doing in that area. So I guess with that, that's kind of the quick summary, and I'll be available any has, if anyone has any questions.
On the, for, on page 57 of the report, the findings, were those, were those, those were two that were cited last, last time?
Yep.
Were there any others?
I don't think we had any last year, yeah.
And you said it's just based on our size of school district?
Correct, yeah.
So it's typical for our size school district?
Correct, yeah. Fifty-nine shows, yeah, those were the two findings you had last year, and they're still there, so, yeah, yeah. Very typical for schools your size to have those, and even some bigger.
Anything else? Mr. Anderson, thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks.
For joining us.
Yeah, and with the rest of the meeting.
Appreciate it very much. Dr. Olson.
All right, just a couple of updates. As a reminder for the school board election update, that December 24th is the deadline for incumbents to file the notice of non-candidacy. January 4th is the candidate deadline for filing all documents needed to establish eligibility to appear on the ballot. And then if we would have multiple candidates, February 15th is the spring primary election. April 5th is the regular spring election, and then on April 25th is when the school board, new school board members would take office, and we'd have the board reorganization meeting at 6:00. So hard to believe those timelines are coming up really, really fast, so it'll be January before we know it. Also, just quickly, I have the copy of the school safety drill reports, and that's required by the Office of School Safety. It doesn't require your approval, it just requires that you have looked at them and know that the principals have actually performed those, and it will require a signature by myself. And then Bob, at the end of the meeting, those get filed with the Office of School Safety. That's our annual thing. And then lastly, a quick COVID update. Fortunately, you know, after a spike in the cases that we saw at the end of October and November, we're starting to see numbers trend back down. We saw a little peak today, just because one of our local daycares had a little bit of an outbreak that now has come into our elementary school, unfortunately, but that's to be expected with the ups and downs that we're going to see for the next couple of months. I have been working on a revised face-covering metric recommendation that I'll bring to the board in January, just working on the side, a little bit on the side with Brianna, and I actually worked with our focus group tonight after school and talked through some of those metrics. So part of that is just including a class-level guideline, just in case there would be transmission within a classroom, that we would have that safety net to require masking so that we wouldn't have further transmission. That's, I'd say, more typical of what we've been seeing, not necessarily a school-wide outbreak or a grade-level outbreak, but we'll see some things in a classroom. So I will continue to work on that and revise that, and like I said, plan on bringing that back to the board if individually you have any questions, or even now, if you have any questions or as you're looking through that, things that you would like to see added more specifically in there or taken out. I definitely can continue to work on that, it's a work in progress, but wanted to have you see that as kind of a midway point before we brought it to the board in January. So I don't know if there's any discussion or any questions about that. I'll wait to talk about the shortened quarantine procedures when we get down to that point in the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Olson. The next item is the president's report. We are going to have a virtual presentation from the firm that conducted the facility survey, and that will occur at 7:30, I think that's when Mr. Muse will be tuning in. So I have several other items. One is that at the annual State Education Convention, there is an assembly of delegates. One delegate is represented from each school district, and they take up various resolutions which may be presented to the legislature or the Department of Public Instruction or things of that nature. And so we need to appoint a person to represent our board at the delegate assembly, and I understood that there might be several members who had an interest in doing that. Is that, is that correct?
I think Brianna and Ken, you are the two that are attending the joint convention.
Yeah. I'm attending.
So do either of you have an interest in being our delegate?
Are you interested?
Totally up to you. I looked through the list of all of the classes, and I thought, ooh, that would be a good one, but that kind of intertwines with some of the delegate things, but I can totally take that role if, if you want. I'm more than happy to, because I think that stuff is interesting, too, so it was a tug-of-war which one to do.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah.
And the last item that I have is that the board is going to discuss the process for evaluation of the district administrator. We'll be doing that in closed session this evening, and we expect that process will occur over the next month, month and a half that will conclude that evaluation. As we wait for 7:30, Dr. Delaney, you have some items that you'd like to talk about as well.
Sure. The first one is correspondence. We received two items. One was a thank-you note from the family of Eileen Baling. Eileen was a former third-grade teacher and administrative assistant for the district. And we also received a letter from Gary or Jerry Smiley, sharing their views on the education system. Also, the policies, okay. Policy is always tricky, because there's always so many of them, and I don't know how much information to give, so I'll give a brief overview, and I will not go until 7:30. We met on November 15th, the policy committee, Ken, myself, and Tanya, and the first thing we did is revise the policy on committees, all right? So that will be an action item, B, Policy 0155, that we'll be looking at later tonight. So some of the changes on that are having three standing committees, the Finance Personnel Committee, Facilities, and Policy. And we've also noted with each policy, or with each committee, corresponding updates and duties, and that's what we'll be looking at tonight. We also reviewed a number of updated district policies for board consideration, including policies directed toward nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, and there were also some minor technical corrections in some of the policies, mainly updating state statutes and outdated language. And if you would like, I can give you a few highlights. It's always daunting when you go in there, and if you can't find the policies, you go in the policy tab, and then the drafts, and then it's always the first document kind of summarizes them. So some highlights. The first one being the board member ethics policy is now deleted, and it's now been combined with the 0144 policy, the code of conduct, and I think we have more information in our board packet about that in particular. Lots of green on that one, and that's because the information is added to, from the old policy to the new one. So anytime you see green on the policies, those are additions, red, and usually with a line between them or through the words are deletions. So all the policies that begin with 01, such as 0167 and 0144, are policies directed toward the board and board members. 0167, for example, addresses public comment at the board meetings, authorizes the board to record or livestream open sessions, banners and signs which are allowed in the meetings cannot obstruct views. So some of the additions to the board meeting policy there. So the 1,000 policies, administrative employees, including the district administration. The 2,000 policies are instructional programming. For example, 2261 is a new policy that explains the district report cards and replaces an older policy, 2700. The 3,000s are professional staff, so for example, Policy 3216 is on dress codes and grooming, focusing on promoting a professional atmosphere while also respecting diversity of staff, probably an example of the anti-harassment, anti-discrimination language that's being added to some of these. The 4,000s are support staff. For example, 4162 is an update to controlled substance alcohol policy for employees who drive district vehicles and transport students. A note that there's similar changes in wording across the different workgroups, which increases the number of policies we have to look at, but if a policy is changed in one workgroup, that same language then is applied to the other ones. 5,000s are students, policies directed towards students. For example, a new COVID-related policy, 5500, student conduct in virtual classrooms. 7440 is related to video surveillance and electronic monitoring, that's a new, a new one covering online and virtual learning sessions and remote work. Food service update, 8500s, and so on. So I think you get the gist of it. So currently, this is what's considered the first reading, and at our next board meeting, we will then have an opportunity to discuss the different changes and vote on whether or not to adopt the changes to these policies.
And John, as a reminder, Policy 4162 has changed throughout Neola because of Lake Mills.
Oh, that's right.
Megan found a flaw in the policy, and we looked at that policy with transportation in alignment to what the federal statute actually says, and the policy that Neola had was an error, so we brought that forward to our Neola rep, who then subsequently changed it across the state. So he's got it noted as woo-hoo, Lake Mills, for our good work in there.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Delaney. We have four minutes until our virtual.
Rob's actually ready to go.
Pardon?
Rob is actually ready to go. He's online if we want to.
Okay, then we don't, then we don't have to interrupt Ms. Williams. So.
I'll get my own house order here. All right, looks like the mirror image that I'm seeing, looks like you can see what I want you to see, right? Looks like your logo and your name?
Yes, we can see your presentation.
Perfect. Well, let's get rolling, Ben. And just before I do, just a quick note first, I really appreciate your flexibility in allowing me to present virtually tonight. It is certainly our season to be presenting at many, many districts, especially, you know, for fall surveys, just like you did. Also, heading around the state to Lodi as well, and I admit that I speed when I drive, but I should not be speeding that much to get from one district to another. So I do appreciate you allowing me to present to this medium. Very briefly about me and about school perceptions, that is not the point of this evening, but I think it is helpful to know who is in front of you, at least in some format. My name is Rob Demese. I am Wisconsin-born and raised, my entire life. I was a high school social studies teacher, kind of in the area. I taught in Evansville, so halfway between Oregon and Janesville, and then for reasons that I'm still coming to terms with, I went back to grad school, got my PhD in education policy analysis from the University of Wisconsin, where I studied political behavior at school referendums, why people vote yes, why people vote no, why they change their minds, or why they don't. So School Perceptions was a very natural home to me, and I really have kind of my hands in two areas, so to speak. Staff, student, and parent surveys are part of my work. Once that teacher hat goes on, it is firmly on, it never comes off, and I am proud of that. And at the same time, I certainly have work on the community side of things, just like we're going to go through tonight. So that's just briefly about me. In terms of School Perceptions, that is where I serve as the research director. We just had our 20th birthday, we're just entering our 20th year. We were founded in 2002 to provide independent research, and in that time, our mission has never changed. It is to help educational leaders such as yourselves do three things, which is gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. We have conducted more than 10,000 staff, parent, student, and community surveys, all in the name of school improvement, and those surveys have been spread across more than 800 districts, who are all doing exactly what you have been doing, which is navigating the strategic planning and/or referendum planning processes. So some logistics related to your survey specifically. As you know, your survey was conducted in October and November of this year. And then a reminder as well in terms of logistics here, how did people actually take the survey? Excuse me. Well, households were mailed a paper copy of the survey, and then they had one of two options, so certainly, they could fill up that paper copy to their heart's content, and it was mailed directly back to us at School Perceptions. The district was very purposefully removed from that process in order to protect confidentiality. We didn't want you to have a hand in that, that was part of our job by nature of hiring us, so we entered anything we got mailed on our end in order to have it reflected in the results. Or, and this is what you can see most people chose to do here, was take the survey online using a 16-character alphanumeric code that the printer had sprayed on the front page of the survey. Once people hit submit or finish on their survey, that expired. They could not access the survey again, in order to prevent people from taking your survey dozens and dozens of times and skewing the results. Most people, as you can see. Most people, as you can see here on the total responses line, did choose to take the survey online. Nevertheless, we do hear that oftentimes people like to have a paper copy in their hands, they'll read it from there, mark their answer online, read a little bit more on paper and answer back online. So, you know, ballpark about, what is it, about 22, 21% of people did choose to take the survey via paper, otherwise the rest were online for a total response rate of 22%. That's great news. Whenever I see a 2 in front, I get pretty excited about that. We certainly feel confident in our predictive and our predictions well below 22%, but once we're up in that range, we feel pretty darn good. And in fact, in terms of total responses as well, it's not uncommon to see the results bop around a little bit in the first 3, 4, 500 or so and then things really quiet down after that. So the fact that you're over 1,000 and that 22% response rate, good news. Two thumbs up there. So who took your survey? Who makes up that 22%? So one thing I like to do here is compare the age groups of people who took your survey as compared to how they are represented proportionally in your community. I would not be a good research director if I didn't spend some of my free time for fun on the Census Bureau website. I absolutely do. I will wear that hat proudly as well. But what they do, which is really handy, is not just the decennial census data, they actually will break down population data annually as well. And they not only do it by municipalities, but they do it on all kinds of different breakdowns, including school district boundaries. So the data that I'm about to go through here isn't just the city of Lake Mills, it's all of the municipalities that feed into your district. So 1% of your survey takers fell into the 18 to 25-year-old bucket and about 7% of your community falls there. That is always, always, always how it goes. It's very, very common for about 1, maybe 2%. Sometimes if we're really on a good day, we max out at about 3, 4% of survey takers in the 18 to 25-year-old bucket. That is the group that is hardest to get to take surveys and it's the group that really traditionally doesn't show up to vote. They have the least likelihood of voting. That's not a Lake Mills thing, not a Wisconsin thing, that is a nationwide thing. That is, it's not a resounding endorsement of 18 to 25-year-olds, but that is reality in terms of what we see not only in survey taking but in election turnout as well. Your 26 to 34 age group was pretty spot on. 11% of your survey takers fell there and a little under 13% of your community falls in that bucket, so pretty close mirror. Your 35 to 54 age group is overrepresented, that is always how it goes as well. For the record, about 27, 28% of your community falls in that middle bar there. Why? Well, 25 to 34 is prime parenting age and it's prime working age. So by nature of being a staff member, or even more importantly, by nature of being a parent, I am pretty darn connected to the school and I'm pretty enthusiastic and motivated to take a school-related survey. So it's not surprising to see kind of a bell shape taking form here. Your 55 to 64 age group, again, almost spot on. 14% of your survey takers fell there, 15% of your community falls in that bucket. And your 65 and over is a little overrepresented. Very good news there on our end. It's actually not bad at all to have your 65-plus be slightly overrepresented. Why? Well, unlike 18 to 25-year-olds, your 65-plus are going to show up and vote. They will be there, absolutely. They have excellent election attendance and they are the most likely to be on a fixed income. So about 22% or a little under a quarter of your survey takers fell into that bucket, whereas 16% of your community is there. And that's actually the first place I go when I'm looking at this particular slide is are we getting a 65-plus because they are most likely to be on a fixed income and are probably most disconnected from the school? And we do, so that's great. That gives me, lends even more confidence, I think, to the survey data we're providing this evening. Do you live in the Lake Mills School District? 6% of people said no, 94% of people said yes. I know you've been down these survey paths with us before, especially at School Perceptions. But just a reminder, why would we send a survey to people that don't live there? The answer to that is really, really threefold. One, I could have a second home or I could have a residence within the school district boundaries and not have it be my primary residence. I might live somewhere else. But I'll have a mailbox or a fire number so that the survey would land in my house that way. Or probably more commonly is staff members don't necessarily need to live within your district's boundaries to work there. So they may commute in or parents that open and roll into the district by nature of having their email address on file, they will also receive the survey. All that being said, valuable to hear the opinions, but they can't control a potential election in the school district. So we are going to strip those 6% of people out and on the upcoming analyses, we're only going to focus on the 94%. We're only going to focus on your residents because they are the people that will ultimately control any election within your boundaries. In which municipality do you live? About, well, about close to two-thirds of your survey takers live within the city of Lake Mills and then about a fifth live within the town of Lake Mills and then so on down the line here in terms of Milford, Waterloo, Asteland, Town of Watertown and Town of Oakland. Not too many, but we did get a couple of, probably a handful of people from the Town of Oakland down there at the bottom. Are you an employee of the Lake Mills Area School District? What I see here and what I would expect to see is one section of the pie graph vastly subsuming the other bits because in any given community, most people are not going to be employed by the school district. So the fact that one chunk is vastly bigger than the other is what I want to see and it's what I do see. So 13% of your survey respondents were employees of the district, whereas 88% were not. Similar but slightly different data here in this next slide. Do you have children attending a district school? In other words, are you a parent of a school-aged kiddo? Here, unlike the previous slide, I want to see two hefty pieces of the pie and I do. I don't really want one to vastly overshadow the other. I want to make sure that we're hearing from both. It's not surprising to hear that 52% of your survey takers were parents. Why? Again, well, they're as connected as you can be to the school community by nature of having kids enrolled. So it's not surprising that they would be motivated to take a school survey. But 42% of your survey takers said, no, we are not a parent. And again, that's good. We want to make sure that we're capturing the voices of those people as well. If they have a school-aged child, what school would they attend? Here, these don't add up to 100% on purpose because I could have more than one kid. You know, I could have a kid enrolled in the elementary and the middle school. So you can't add them up to 100%. But for what it's worth, about half of your parents who did say they had a school-aged kid said they were at the elementary level, a little over a third at the high school and about a third at the middle school with a smattering of survey takers at a private school, other or homeschool. We then went into communication. So the specific question is something worthwhile pausing for in a sec. It said, how do you like to receive school and district information? So note, it doesn't say, how do you? So this is more of a preference question. How do you like to receive it? The best way to read this slide is close one eye and tip your head to the right because there are two groups here. For your non-parents, non-staff, which is how this particular graph or slide is organized, 55% said they want to get their school news from district or school newsletters. And again, over half the votes went to the Lake Mills leader. And then to a slightly lesser extent, school and district websites and emails. If there's an email address on file, if they can have an email address on file, that's where your non-parents, non-staff want to receive information. Your parents certainly are very enthusiastic about email, but they too are getting a lot of their school news from newsletters, from the website, and then to some extent, the Lake Mills leader and phone notifications. Then we're going to show some slides here that are exact screenshots or repetitions from your survey itself. So some of these slides I'll go through a little bit quicker simply because it's not new information. Why do we do that? We want these reports that we produce for you to be a one-stop shop. We don't want you to have to dig up a paper copy if you still have one laying at home. We don't want you to have to dig up an old survey draft and then wonder whether it's the most up-to-date one. So in the name of transparency, if you post this on your website, even if I chose not to take the survey, I can still see everything that was on the survey and I could see the results as well. So in terms of your background information, what was on the survey? We talked a little bit about some financial background. So the trajectory of your mail rates and where you are not only relative to yourself in previous years, but where you fall relative to the state average at the capital conference. And then in the background information page, we also talked about academic achievements. So here, we noted that at least according to the data that was available at the time of publication, you exceeded expectations and had the highest overall academic score again in the capital conference. We then went into the facility background. So again, no new information here. This is exactly from your survey. We talked about your long-range facility plan and where you landed in that plan as of now. Your enrollment growth and capacity issues and where your youngest learners were currently learning. Some enrollment growth and capacity issues. So there was a really helpful chart that was produced here in terms of what is your actual enrollment, where are you projected to be and where are you at in terms of capacity. And then we paused and asked a question. And we said, would you support the district exploring a referendum to address the elementary space and capacity needs explained above, or at least above on the piece of paper that was presented? This is what I kind of lovingly call the permission slip question. Well, I guess, let me pause my next point to go through some of the data. What I'm seeing here is 91% of staff are signing the permission slip, so to speak. So overwhelming support for your staff to explore the elementary issues. Parents as well, 71% are saying, yes, go ahead and explore. And then we drop off a little bit. 47% of your non-parents, non-staff are saying yes to support. Why is that important? Just like I often look for the 65-plus on the previous slide, here, when I'm looking at results, the first place my eyes go are those purple bars. Why? Because the majority of your community, in fact, in any given community, about 75% of the proportion of your community is going to fall as non-parents, non-staff, which means that 75% of your community is landing in this purple bar right here. That doesn't mean that we don't care what staff and parents think. We absolutely do. And I say that as a former teacher myself. My point is though, that they just don't represent as many people in the community as your non-parents, non-staff do. We absolutely want to know what staff are thinking. They are influential members of their community. People are going to stop them at the grocery store. They're going to stop them at Friday Fish Fry and they're going to say, hey, something's going on. Tell me a little bit about what's going on at the school. Tell me about the plans. So we absolutely have to know what they think. We do. When I see the no here, again, I want to focus on this purple bar. About 33% of your non-parents, non-staff are saying, no, we don't want you to explore. For context, that is a little high. Typically on this particular slide, I see that being about, usually about 24, 25, 26, maybe 27. Or in other words, about a quarter of any given community, this is not a Lake Mills thing, but about a quarter of any given community is going to say no to every property tax increase. That is very normal. You are a little above that. You're at about one-third coming out of the gate saying no. The other reason why that kind of catches my eye a little bit here is because if I were a Lake Mills property taxpayer, I could tell you to explore until the cows come home and that doesn't cost me anything. That doesn't cost me a dime to explore. So the fact they're a little bit above what I normally see here and it's not asking me for anything related to my wallet yet did draw my eye. As we move forward though, we actually talked about what the recommended plan would be for your facilities. So again, nothing new here. We talked a little bit about what the recommended plan would entail in terms of building a school that had the following characteristics that you see on this slide, where it would take place or where it would be located rather in the city of Lake Mills with a very rough conceptual outline here. And then we noted what other work could potentially occur at the elementary school and the middle school as well. And then of course, disclose the cost, which would not exceed $36 million. I talked a little bit about then what the breakdown or the reconfiguration of the grades would be because really at this point in the survey, people care about two things. One, where are my kids going to go and is it different than where they're going right now? And two, how much is this going to cost me? So yes, I want to know the total cost as a taxpayer, but at the same time, when you say, you know, up to 36 million, what does that actually mean as a property taxpayer within the district? So here, we wanted to cross one bridge by saying here would be the configuration both currently and the future of our schools. And then broke down the funding support. So if we did pursue a recommended facility plan as described here, it would cost you the 36 million. And then disclosed what the actual cost would be for every $100,000 of property value, 200,000, 300,000 and so on. Then we asked the all-important question. We said, would you support a capital referendum for the recommended facility plan that would not exceed $36 million? We again disclosed what that would cost per $100,000 of fair market property value and disclosed what assumptions these were made in terms of interest rates. Your staff residents, again, purposely sounding like a broken record here, we have stripped out anybody who doesn't live within your district and we're only focusing on residents. Your residents who are staff members overwhelmingly said yes to this, close to 9 and 10 or 88% lean towards yes. Your parents, about two-thirds, 67% said yes to the recommended facility plan. And then your non-parents, non-staff are at 43% saying yes and 47% saying no. One question that I always get here, and if you were part of the prior survey planning in previous years that we've done with you, is what's going on with the undecided people? For better or worse, people in the Midwest are too nice. And I say that as a proud Midwesterner native, which is great in terms of politeness, but it's a little wrinkle in terms of our survey taking. People sometimes know that they're going to tell you no. They're absolutely certain they're going to tell you no if push came to shove and they were in a voting booth asking for district feedback on a referendum. But telling you no feels mean, it feels rude, so they say undecided even though they absolutely know what they're going to say. But what we've found is that there's about a two-thirds to one-third breakdown here. In other words, about two-thirds of undecided voters will go downward towards no, towards the red, and about one-third of undecided voters will head up toward the green. So ballparking my math a little bit here, if you figure about 3 to 4%, then you're looking at about, you know, 46, 47% of your non-parents, non-staff leaning towards yes. Why do I pause here? 75% of your community is contained on this slide. That's pretty close, obviously. You know, 46, 47% of the highest proportion of your community. As you know, you need 50% plus one for a referendum to pass. So I thought this would be a worthwhile time to do a little bit of additional analyses here. Again, focused on your recommended facilities plan, but for some visual aids here, nothing new here, but again, while it sounds like a broken record, 75% of your community is non-parents, non-staff. About 25% of any given community are going to be parents who are not staff members and about 1% are staff members. Again, not to say that staff members aren't important, it's just that they don't represent a very sizable chunk of a community. So we want to weight the support that we're seeing from survey respondents according to how people are represented in the community. When we do that, approximately 49% of survey respondents are saying definitely yes or probably yes. When we go through our one-third rule and say that one-third of undecided respondents will ultimately break toward yes, so now we're kind of at our tippy, tippy top here, about 52% are leaning towards yes in support of the recommended facility plan. That is very, very close. You know, obviously, just to repeat myself, you know, you don't break that 50% threshold until you apply that one-third rule. Even on the weights here, you're still at 49% for people saying definitely yes or probably yes. So regardless, this is a very, very close, close result here. There wasn't the only bit of your survey though. The second part of that right afterwards said, if you would support a capital referendum for construction of a new building, would you also support a $750,000 recurring operational referendum? Question two represents an annual tax increase of $57 for every $100,000 of property value. Again, same breakdowns here. Your staff residents, about three-quarters said yes. Your parents, who are non-staff members, 61% said yes. And now we're down for non-parents, non-staff at 39% yes with 49, 39% saying yes with 49% saying no. And if I again do my rule here, about one-third of your undecided will break upwards and now we're at about 43% of non-parents, non-staff showing support for the operational bit to your survey. Same analyses, same additional analyses here. Would this operational plan be supported? Of those responding definitely yes, probably yes in proportion to how they're weighted in the community or weighted in proportion to how they're seen in the community, about 45% there. But we remain under to the 50% threshold even when we apply our one-third rule. So now we're at our tippy, tippy top here being at 49%, obviously below the 50% plus one that this would need in order to see support. Again, not the only bit of your survey. We also asked, how well are we doing in each of the following areas? And those areas, there were four of them. Delivering a high-quality education, building pride in the community, keeping the public informed and managing funds appropriately on a scale here of one to four. Poor being one, great being four. So can't go below that, can't go above that. All these numbers have to land between one and four. This slide is helpful, but really the next one I think is a little bit easier to read because it's a little bit more contextualized. So what do I see here? The metric of the four that your survey respondents rate you highest on is delivering a high-quality education. 87% or roughly nine and 10 of your survey respondents agree that you're doing a good or great job in terms of delivering a high-quality education, which puts you at the 80th percentile. Just a quick review of percentiles. Somebody has to be at the top and somebody has to be at the bottom. No matter what the data set is, there's always going to be a top, there's always going to be a bottom, no matter how wide that data set is. Or putting it differently, every single data set is going to have a median at the 50th percentile. What does that mean? What does that mean? It means that by definition, half of districts are doing better than me, and half of districts are doing worse than me if I land at the 50th percentile. Here, in terms of delivering a high-quality education, among your comparison schools, you're way above that. You're at the 80th percentile. In other words, you're doing better than 80% of other schools out there among your comparisons. Similar theme here. You're at the 72nd percentile in terms of keeping the public informed. Over eight in 10 agree that you're doing a good or great job there. 69th percentile for managing funds appropriately. And 61st percentile for building pride in the community. And both of those final two metrics, about three-quarters of people are saying that you're doing a good or great job there. So all in all, really good data here. This is really important. This is kind of your bread and butter, your meat and potatoes, or whatever food metaphor you want to go to, because I haven't eaten dinner yet. But this is good news, and I do think it's worth hanging your hat on. Same here. On a scale of zero to 10, how likely would you be to recommend a district to a friend or family member? Your average was 7.42, which put you at about the two-thirds percentile. In other words, you're doing better than approximately two-thirds of other districts among your comparison schools, and only one-third are doing better than you. 29% or almost a third gave me the highest possible score they could. And it doesn't take long to breach that majority. So 29 and 14 is 43%, plus another 19 is, what, 62%? So I'm well over a majority, you know, just giving you a 10, nine, or eight. So that is very good news. I'm certainly seeing satisfaction with the work that you're doing in Lake Mills. I'm seeing very little red and maroon down here at the bottom. Also great. Always, 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 I see a little hump in the middle here. I always see that bar being a little longer. Why? Because we don't offer a cop-out here. We want people to choose. We don't offer an I don't know or cannot evaluate. We want to push people toward a poll. But if people don't know, if they truly don't know, they tend to choose neutral just because it feels the safest and it feels, you know, the kind of middle of the road. And it is. So a little bit of fire hose drinking here. In summary, what did we learn? The Board of Education could consider pursuing an April referendum. Survey data tells us that right now, the recommended plan is too close to call. But if I were in your shoes, I would let voters ultimately make the decision there because of the data that we saw earlier on. Now, when I talk about recommended plan here, I'm talking about that facilities bit. Yes, it is very, very close. You do see a slight breakage over that majority threshold, once we include one-third undecideds, but it's very, very close. But nevertheless, at the end of the day, I would put this in front of voters and I would let them have the ultimate decision here in April. The operational referendum will also likely be very close. But unlike the facilities piece, respondents lean toward opposition, no matter how we slice and dice that data there according to weighting in the community. If both are pursued on the same April ballot, support would likely drop for both projects, given the combined cost or tax impacts. And then lastly, overall, respondents are satisfied with the district, especially in terms of delivering a high-quality education and keeping the public informed. So let me pause there. Thank you for your time. Take a quick swig of water and ask what questions you might have for me this evening.
Thanks, Rob. So this is the board's opportunity, since you have the expert here with us tonight, to ask any clarifying questions about the data that he has.
This is Amy Litcher. I have one on Slide 37, talking about just the number of respondents. If you would support, it's the question two, if you would support a capital referendum for construction? Did you see a number, like, that's worded funny to me, just the... Did everyone answer that question? Or did, yeah, 30... 37, page 37, or Slide 37. Okay, oh, there you go. So did you see that the numbers of respondents that people, that had already said, no, I'm not going to, not support it, did answer that question? Or was that of the people that said, yes, I would support a referendum, but I wouldn't respond? The number of respondents, did you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, yeah. In fact, as I'm listening, I'm pulling up the actual backend here. I'll answer that question for you. So first thing, I know it wasn't branched. So everybody saw this question regardless. So the opportunity was there for everybody to answer it. Let me see what the end value was. Facilities. Yeah, so there were no required questions. But there were, of the total people that took your survey, less than a dozen chose not to answer this. So really, it was kind of, you know, regardless of how I was feeling on the previous question, just about everybody answered this one as well. So I, you know, far less than 1% chose not to answer this. Despite the preface to the question. Yep.
Thanks.
Anything else? Well, Mr. Demus, we thank you very much for joining us this evening and giving us a summary of the survey. This information, along with other information, we'll use as we move forward in deciding if and when we move forward with the referendum. So thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, the next item on the agenda is community input.
High school report.
I'm sorry?
The student report? The student report?
Oh. Ms. Williams, I apologize.
No worries.
Yeah, so.
Hi, I'm Sydney Williams. I'm the senior class president, and I'm here to give you some updates on the high school. So to start, I'll start with sports. So wrestling, they currently have 20 guys out, which is the most they've had in a really long time. They're currently 1-0 in conference. And this weekend, they have a big tournament, the Badger Invite, at the Alliant Energy Center. For boys' basketball, they, this year, they are an extremely young team with a 1-2 record. And they have a home game tonight, which is currently going on, and a game this Saturday at home against Belleville. For girls' basketball, the record is 4-2, and they have a home game this Tuesday against Martin Luther, and then again on Friday against Lakeside. And for other school things, our National Honor Society is currently doing a fundraiser at the high school where you can purchase a candygram and write a little note with it, and then they are delivered to students. The proceeds for this fundraiser are going to Christmas neighbors. Another thing that the high school is doing as well fundraiser-wise is our annual Santa social. The high school student council is putting on a raffle for the high school where items are raffled off that are donated by local businesses, and the proceeds go to the mill, which is the Lake Mills High School's food pantry. And we wanted to thank the local businesses for donating items that are being raffled off. And then for our music programs, band and orchestra, I think band was last week and orchestra was the week before. They both had concerts, and they were both really well. They did a really good job, and they all appreciated the support of the parents and community members. And then next week, Tuesday, December 21st, the choir will have their concert, and they would appreciate if community support came and/or like parents, and just the music programs appreciate the support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have one person that signed up for the... Sheena Wiedenfeld. If you could come up, identify yourself and provide your address.
All right. I'm Sheena Wiedenfeld, and my address is N 6414 Leighton Road, here in Lake Mills. So I'm here to talk about the process and conversations about voting for the mitigation metrics regarding COVID and masking and unmasking, and your relationship with parents. First, this plan is long overdue and should have been voted and implemented with a mask policy from start. You were pretty eager to put coverings over the kids' face, but you failed to base it off of data and build a comprehensive plan that went with it right away. Masking is a response to COVID numbers. It's only logical that it would have had a numerical basis from the beginning of the year so that we would have some kind of reading of when masks would come off. Secondly, there was apprehensions that came up due to vaccination statuses of students. I think that's wrong. That's a decision for families to make without your guys' influence. And masking is based on COVID rates, not vaccine rates. Many vaccinated people are getting and spreading the disease. So there's no evidence to treat vaccinated differently than unvaccinated. The threat is the same. I personally caught it from vaccinated persons. So I feel you should treat them the same in your plan. And if vaccines are not catching, or preventing the catching or spreading, and it's only managing symptoms, that's what the manufacturers claim. It's a mild symptom management. They say it doesn't prevent the spread or prevent you from catching. This is really, can't be classified as a successful public health intervention for the spread. Other hesitations came about for students that were not eligible for vaccine yet. The FDA, it doesn't really determine eligibility. This is a new word that is kind of weird to me. They determine if a product is safe or unsafe. So it's not safe for 4K students. There are real side effects to the vaccine, and I personally know eight people, and my circle is pretty small, that have some serious issues. So with the constant conversations about it, like, God forbid, a kid under your guys', or parents under your advisement, take their kid and something happens. I think you should stay out of that conversation that's meant for the household. Seems like you're going off of opinions, not data. Otherwise, you'd be willing to present it. And you haven't implemented plans at the beginning of your decision-making. And you wonder why parents are upset. They feel that you're neglecting some duties. All parents, including the ones you disagree with, have valid concerns. Instead of spending time scolding them, you should be spending time presenting justifications and data to us. You spent time expressing to us how hard this is for you. Well, there's people in this community that would enjoy engaging with parents and work with them instead of basically mandating them. Let them do it. COVID has a vaccine. It's treatable, and it's less dangerous than the flu still, even after 2020 to kids. This is no longer really a pandemic. It's here to stay. It's an endemic. Even CDC is admitting that. And we should be treating, getting closer to treating it like common illnesses. The rationalities are running out, and after two years of mask and vaccine, COVID's still here. You need to stop pushing stuff that doesn't work while ignoring negative statistics on child trauma, depression, suicide, and learning that's come from all of this. Many schools have been unmasked, and to your surprise, haven't had issues, including ones in our town. So it's time to move forward. And I feel that you guys are so far behind to just start voting on a plan now.
Okay, we can move into the consent agenda. And this evening, the consent agenda consists of the meeting minutes from the November 8 regular meeting, the November Policy and Finance Committee proceedings, pay schedule for food service and special education, para-education staff, new student organization, November Treasuries Report and vouchers and invoices, and Personnel Report. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions?
Just a comment, the new student organization about for esports. I think it's a very good thing. And I mean, it addresses the, potentially, students that, well, it addresses another group of students that I think is just fantastic.
I looked into this even further this weekend and found out that some colleges actually offer scholarships, much like they would offer like a football scholarship, that there's actually esports scholarships for colleges where, for students to compete. So, yeah, there's much more to that club than what I even realized. So that's Chris Cerniak, that's his brainchild, and kudos to him for bringing it forward.
Others, comments, questions? Hearing ended, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving into the action items. The first item is approval of quarantine revision procedures. Dr. Olson, you can give us a little bit of background on that, please.
Right, this, it actually was a response from some parent communication that I had. And as I looked into it further, our tendencies do seem to be that the parents get COVID and then it's passed on to the child. Well, a lot of times, the way our quarantine procedure works is that, you know, the children are out for, you know, 14 days due to a parent quarantine in the family. Well, it never fails that a second parent in the household inevitably comes down with COVID. And we were seeing some of the children and the families out from school, anywheres from, you know, 21 days, 24 days, just due to some circumstances. And that's just way too long and unacceptable. And with the availability of testing and, you know, some parents' abilities to isolate totally from their children, we just said, this doesn't make any sense. And met with the Jefferson County Health Department, and they said, yes, you can implement that immediately. In fact, they were advising some of our parents about this, and it wasn't in line with what we were doing. So I'm bringing this forward, too, so that we can revise that in order to keep kids in school instead of keeping them out.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the revisions to the district's quarantine procedures.
I move the board approve the revisions to the district quarantine procedures for COVID-19 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. This appears to be a reasonable response to the current situation. We have some discussions with the local health department. So this seems like a reasonable thing. I think it'll make life a little easier for people. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of policy 0155, which is committees. And this was discussed at our last meeting. In the first reading of it, Dr. Delaney gave an additional discussion this evening. So I would ask for a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve policy 0155, committees as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The policy is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is the approval of gifts. And again, we are, continue to be grateful for the support that the community provides. So I would entertain a motion accepting those gifts, please.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for the continued support of students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. A donation of 50 pounds of apples from Jellies Market to the high school baking and pastry classes used to make mini-apple pie crumble, mini-apple crumble pies. And a $500 donation to Club 55 from Wayne Magnuson.
Second.
Moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please, on the acceptance?
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Upcoming board agenda items. Dr. Olson?
Well, the second reading of the policies that you saw here tonight, and also approval of the school board resolutions that we discussed tonight, so that Brianna would bring those to the delicate assembly. I will also be bringing you the 2022-23 calendar for approval. I met for the second time with the focus committee on that. So we think we are finished with next year's calendar.[1764.38] with next year's calendar, and then per state statute, bringing you the open enrollment seats. And then I will have a proposal for you to change the business meeting in March. Both Megan and I will be out of the district on Monday, the March, on Monday, March fourteenth. I'm on a planning committee for the state and need to be in Milwaukee with Megan that night, so we're just going to be asking for your approval to move the board meeting a week later.
Okay, thank you. I would now like to ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll motion to adjourn to executive session.
You actually got to read the whole proposed motion, Ken.
Oh. I moved the board, I moved the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute one-nine-point-eight-five, one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Approval of executive session minutes, administrative contracts, professional staff contract, the mental manager letter of assignment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing on a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert DiImperio?
Aye. Motion carries. We will move to executive session and reconvene at the conclusion of that.